I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, on the nation for the good of the people, the citizens, and the people in justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the second meeting of 2023. Tonight, we have a public hearing that followed by a short break. And then all of it up for other questions, comments, and concerns. And that is mostly sort of a public hearing before we begin the Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Legal notice of special use public care in Incorporated Village of Floral Park New York. Notice here by the end of the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park New York above the public care in Village Hall, One Floral Park, Floral Park New York on Tuesday, January 17, 2023, at 8:00 p.m. in relation to the following application. The application of the Harrison, eighty-six South Tyson Avenue, Helsinki, Vincent De Rico, owner of eighty-six South Tyson Avenue, Floral Park New York, is made in accordance with Audit of Free Section 99-10b of the zoning ordinance of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park New York to modify Special Use Permit Resolution Number 2021-18 so as to allow for live music on premises in a B1 district that use may only authorize as a special use at a public hearing. The structure for which said special permit is applied is situated on the northwest corner of South Tyson Avenue, Tyson Avenue Extension, and now Section 32, one thirty-five, at month sixteen of the Minnesota County Department of Tax Management. A copy of the application is on file in the office of the Village Park for the Floral Park, Floral Park New York, and may be examined by any persons interested there during business hours Monday through Friday inclusive, except legal holidays from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Now take notice that all parties and interested citizens will be given the opportunity to be heard and request their time and place by your part of the Board of Trustees, Incorporated Village of Floral Park New York. Susan E. Walsh, Village Clerk, is dated December 30, 2022, and that the legal notice is published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park New York and posted according to law.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I'd like to place on the record that the applicant has filed that the service indicated the full name of the two of the bright radius of the dwelling have been served with notice. Also, I can announce that the board previously adopted a resolution determining that the application does not have significant impact on the environment as defined by C. Now let's invite Sir Rico Markman to present. Give us a fresh piece of warning, and present what he is looking to do.
Do you swear from the testimony now to give the legal protection of your attorney? Name and address. Uh, business.
So we understand that we want to add live music that is not just in the original application that you made. Just describe what you're going to do.
I think, sure, thank you. I think what we do, what we want to come and do as far as music is concerned, actually provides a service to the community in its sense. It's, I think we've already been established as a place for adults between Floral Park and the surrounding towns to come to where they know they're in a safe environment. They can come and enjoy themselves and know that it's safe. I think what we're looking to do as far as the music is concerned is putting crazy. And if you don't do it, we've had, we've had one, two, three-piece bands in reasonable hours. It doesn't draw, we're not looking for a very young crowd. We're looking for an adult crowd that likes to come, you know, have something to eat, drink, enjoy some music. The hours of operation that we run are early. We don't run late operations. So again, I think it's something that people really look forward to. And I think it adds, it adds to the, it adds to Floral Park and gives people opportunity to live in Floral Park and close by, to not have to travel and to go to other towns to get this. And if the music is really soft, it's not anything hardcore or multiple big band type of situation. So really, if you're looking to floor any questions or concerns that you might have.
Yes, I have, I'm sure we've got a number of questions. Just to, I guess, better define what you're looking to do. I think to better define what you're looking to do, what it is and what it won't be. Right, so, and I guess if you have questions, you can answer them.
Yeah, I think what we're going to do is, again, music that's muted, whether it be soft rock, jazz, vocals, theme nights, for instance, like Oktoberfest, the German music thing, or again, going back to just basic type of music that's either vocals or instrumental, guitar.
So I guess, we mentioned guitar. What type of instruments would they have here? Just guitars?
Mostly guitars. There's no guitar, maybe a little bit of soft, you know, organ music, sort of piano music in that sense. No, really no, no drums or loud.
No drums, no drums or strings?
No, no music like that. Nothing that, nothing that would be, how do you say it? I don't think it would be a nuisance.
Would it be heard from the street?
I don't think you'd have an issue as far as, especially with the surrounding. I think the way we do it would be, not be really an issue. Again, obtrusive to the surrounding, it would at all.
So would you hear, would you hear from the street, yes or no?
I don't, you know what? I don't, I want to say something. I mean, personally, I think that if I stand outside, right outside, it's entirely low, it's nothing that's, to me personally, anything loud or obtrusive or anything that's a nuisance. There, I really don't think so.
Would the opponents cross the street here?
I don't know because I don't, I don't, you know, we haven't had any problems with, you know, we don't think we have any problems with the surrounding. I think it's like anything else. I think if you, if your windows are closed, you know, it's checking out if your windows are closed and anything that's open. I don't think it's anything, we're not looking for, we're not looking for club scenes. We're not doing, we're not doing clubs. We're not going to cover, you know, door cover situations. We're not doing anything like that. If anything is to accent the restaurant, and that's what I think it really is.
Would you have to remove tables in the event you have a certain band? Or the tables are going to remain as?
It's really not, it's really not meant to be, you know, we're not providing a dance floor. We're not providing space being up for it. It's really, you know, people want to enjoy themselves and, you know, in place. That's a little bit, that's fine, but we're certainly not providing anymore. It's not, again, it's not in any means meant to be any type of concert situation. It's not meant to be a club or DJ. I don't think that's what we stand for. I think we've proven in the last four years kind of who we are and what we stand for. I think that were a positive member of the community.
Would there be any new lighting put in and/or a stage, a stage lighting?
Absolutely not. I don't think there's no aesthetics in it or anything anyway, so not.
Okay.
Good evening and welcome. Where would the band or music be placed? Towards that, with the side towards the wall?
It would be two, it could be two places. It could be by the side where it was right now outside or it could be inside, the doors open, it could be inside going out or it could be, you know, or it could just be on the side of our actually facing the actual item.
Do you expect it to be a crowd that comes mainly to have dinner and maybe at the bar just before dinner or after dinner? Or are you expecting a crowd out there like inside to have a great crowd that come there to be there for a while and have a great time if you do? Is that what you're envisioning outside?
I really, from an operator perspective, it's always best when people, and we're not looking for anybody to just not put a good thing on, for anybody having, you know, first, a little bit want to have, but we really prefer when people are relaxing, eating and drinking, not really just bar.
Do you currently outside have any issues with occupancy in the night? I mean, do you get crowds out there?
We don't, I don't believe we, no, I don't, again, we're not, we're not the type of place that people are coming in large crowds. I think that's one reason why people, one of the reasons they like coming to us is they know they're not going to have that kind of environment. They know that's an environment where it's not going to be, I'm sorry, the news was not supposed to be so long-winded between the occupancy of the actual tables that are there and the actual bars that are there. And I think, again, people come to us because they feel safe. They feel it's a good environment to go with either their friends or with their significant other. And it's a nice place to go where they don't have to travel so out of town and it doesn't really bother with regular bars and no crowds. But that's really not our thing.
Everybody should feel comfortable with it.
Yes.
With the music.
Because if you feel, you should lose it.
Thank you.
Trustee, your turn.
So is this music going to be amplified? Is it going to be amplified or just acoustic?
My opinion is a camera is love. I think depending on the artists and how they play, I think we need, it can be acoustic, but also if it's an app, it's a small app just to be able to proper like sound to get the kind of sound that they want for their music and not necessarily love being loud. I think it's just part of how they play and something.
Will it be continued during the night or?
I'm sorry?
Will it be continued during the night or just in the starting five?
When we say night, even at night, I don't think it'd be anything past ten or eleven o'clock anywhere because at that point we really don't, you know, it's when we start, we start completely down per se and.
Can you commit to a time, can you sit down or whatever?
I'd be safe.
Can we add a limit to this in the?
Right. I'd be safe to say, I think we're fine at eleven o'clock, to be honest with you.
Okay, so you're pressed to eleven?
We don't need anything later than eleven o'clock though. If not, I'm just, and that's in the late time because usually we would end it earlier, but eleven o'clock.
That's all interesting.
So would any of these performances increase your maximum capacity? Would you increase, you know, like the crowd showing?
I don't think it's about necessarily increasing our capacity as more as filling, filling the seats that are available. For instance, you know, because outdoors, we want to be able to, not only have a nice crowd inside, but we want to have, sometimes people have a different reason for wanting to sit outside, whether it's because of the weather outside, whether it's just to hear the music outside, whether it's to watch, you know, the TV and watch the sporting event on the TV outside. So it's just an extra means of generating income. And I think that's the main purpose.
And when you do it outside, would the music be played inside or vice versa? Would you do it outside with music be played outside?
The music, once we do it outside, usually it's just things to the room with the door, the fridge door open and outside. We have a separate, we treat the inside of the restaurant differently because inside, if you do the bar inside and dining room inside, then there's people, the opportunity who don't want to listen to music to just have a regular dining experience. Everybody is not exposed, it's not one of, you know, one of all of us. Basically, again, somebody comes in and they want to have dinner, want to have a regular bar, and they want to be a part of it, they don't have to. So it's not the, you know, it's not the.
Trustee Stewart.
Hi, all right. Are you, you said something about heat nights. Would you be looking to have any sort of floor shows? Anything that would require a cabaret license?
No.
Okay. So I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you're considering putting, having outdoor dining on the Caramite Place by the takeout window for the spring, would you be looking to put music out there as well?
The takeout, the space that we have on, on the takeout side is really different. So we're not looking to do any music at all.
Okay.
No, 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 no music at all.
Okay, great.
That's just for people who want takeout. They have a quick access to sitting down and driven.
Right.
For a no, we don't even want a way to sort of, it's just for people to, a convenience for them if they want a quick bite, they just have it.
Okay. So to your knowledge, do you have any outstanding violations with the Village Department?
Not to my knowledge.
So fix the fence?
The fence meaning the height?
Yes.
The height, we, I didn't realize we have to go for zoning to go up because we're, it's a two-feet difference. So in reference to that, you might, right away, we still finish applying for that because I hope we're good, but.
I don't believe you are.
No, I think, I mean, I think we have to look at it, which I thought would be a lot of time.
I, I'm always the garbage person. I always ask the questions about garbage. I don't believe this will generate any, any additional trash.
No.
I don't think it would. I have to, you know, I have to blow up to my reputation. Sorry. So the TVs that you have outside, those, there's still no volume, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The music, where would you expect the band members to park?
We have to find, we're starting to find a little more.
Okay. Where would they unload and unload their equipment? You know, it's very, it's really dicey over there on Tyson.
Yes.
And that, and that we, where we have placed.
Well, in front of us.
Passenger drop off.
Exactly.
You know, I don't know how long you would, you would be okay with you holding that.
I don't, I don't think, again, because this is not involving any major theatrical type of bands or big bands. So I think anything that's more than five or ten, quick drop and go. I don't, actually, that's all.
Does this require an amendment to your liquor license?
I don't believe so, but I will check.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Trustee on the line.
Thanks, sir. Good evening. Thanks for being here. Most of my questions got answered. Just one question. You talked about using the music to enhance the dining experience. Everybody be sitting down having dinner. Would you ever close that back area and do a private party with music back there?
I don't, I think we have, it depends on the, anything like that usually has to do with, honestly, the charity stuff, like the charity stuff. Situations where actually the charity organizations kind of want a little bit of it. So I suppose it draws for them to make money. But otherwise, I don't really personally.
Because one thing, it's one thing to be sitting and having dinner with some background music. It's not even have a private party that can get built up.
Absolutely.
Loud and also well of the capacity.
Yes, I don't, it doesn't, again, I would like to think of the last week that I've been there for you or spoke for you, that we've proven to be a good member of the community with, with love issues. I would think it fits into the narrative of the way we operate. We don't like trouble period, even not just for the community, but only for ourselves, for the safety of our patrons, for the safety of our employees, for the safety of the surrounding community. They don't really have tolerance for that, so we don't really care to do that. Much less somebody, again, sitting, eating, enjoying, kind of just drinking because actually it brings, it's more bringing to the people. And I don't drink, I just.
Thank you.
Mayor, today's, I think I heard you say you will have a special event. I think you alluded to maybe Oktoberfest. Did you say that?
I said, as far as Oktoberfest, giving the example of a, a special night as far as, because again.
A special night, what kind of band would you have?
Again, a type of band that could be a one or two-piece with, with a vocal, one or two, a vocal engaging.
Not like a whole lot of, like, like Oktober.
No, no, fortunately, no, we don't, we don't have the size for that anyway. We don't, so I don't, I know it's not, I mean, I have a big, we just don't. Because even if we want to.
You'd limit it to the three-piece.
Absolutely, totally fine. Don't need any more.
Thank you.
You mentioned the eleven p.m. Which days would you have music in? If you give me the days you have it, the start and end times?
Usually, usually Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday will be more, unless it's, sometimes Monday could be because of the holiday. Weekend might be a little bit more of a, and then, you know, especially if people like, I don't know, if people are close to home, people who didn't go away for the weekend. I think people like the idea sometimes of being able to say, you know what, we're not going somewhere, or we can stay local and hear a little music, get somebody to play a little bit of new music. And I think they like that. So that's what I would say. Other than that, that's why I say on Monday, that's maybe three or four times, whatever it is, during certain parts of the season or holidays. Other than that, usually for the day, Friday, Sunday.
And what time would it start?
If it starts, it usually starts at, you know, four or five p.m. to around nine or ten p.m. usually. Eleven, eleven p.m. would be not even typical per se, you know. But that, that's why I say eleven, not just ten for, you know, sometimes it would be one of the nice times, but, you know.
What about Sunday, would you have it before p, before four p.m.?
Before four p.m., yes, we'd like to do, like, either even, for example, music outside, whether it be jazz brunch or whether it be with some DJ, you know, brunch with some, you know, some DJ music playing. But again, nothing that's, if it's, I don't like that because if I'm personally, if I'm active personally, if it's loud, it's, to me, it's ruining the dining experience. And to me, it's better to have a background music that's not, like, it's not too loud. But at the same time, if it's, if it's, if you can't talk and if you can't converse with, with your, with your guests that you're with or your company that you're with, to me, it's the few differences. The one.
So what time do you ask it before it's on that? So what?
We start starting.
Starting at, I think, on Sundays.
So let's say twelve, usually twelve p.m. to nine p.m. usually on a Sunday.
What about, would you be advertising what band is there or what person's singing?
Well, we like, we feel that it can be a little more of a chore at some place, some that are a little more of a following, maybe, like a vocal following. It'd be helpful. We don't have, but I think that would be that with, we should do an email, a phone email or a website. That's it. To our regular, to our regular customer database. We don't put, we don't, we don't.
I have to, what am I taking? No, sorry.
So would you be having DJ, a teacher, or not having a teacher?
I said Sunday brunch, like.
I'm pretty sure I heard it earlier. You said no, then Sunday.
It is, but it comes, I just said that Sunday is the one day that I think people like, quote unquote, like sometimes I'm going to DJ.
So it is what is it?
I'm sorry?
So it is a fan.
What I say, what I say is I'm not trying to be cute around the question.
I feel like you're just trying to cover all your races, but I just, I just want to get to the bottom of it.
No, what I'm getting to the bottom of, it could be, maybe it could be live Monday and maybe it could be DJ on Sunday, maybe do live on Sunday. That's all I'm saying. So that's what I'm saying.
Is the permit for live music or is the permit for music? The permit application? The permits for live music? So what prompted you to apply for the permit?
I'm sorry?
What prompted you to apply for the permit?
Because I really feel that people would enjoy it. Again, I think we provide, I think we provide something for the local community that's adult-oriented, it's not young bar crowd, that it's, it's an adult way of being able to go out and, and.
So like when you were talking with your, I mean, thinking about it to your partners, you decided this was something you wanted to do and then somebody realized that you needed a permit?
Yes, like, yeah, yes, some things, whether it's, I apologize, they, there's not a good excuse, but sometimes, you know, you don't want to talk. So nothing that they're trying to get away with anything, you know, in one session.
Right. So sometimes a DJ, sometimes live music?
On Sunday, Sunday's only day.
So you'd be comfortable with us qualifying that as, as only Sundays?
Yeah, yeah, because honestly, people would rather have, I think people would rather, you know, be more inclined to come live and, like, even though, you know, it's a matter of whether it is, but, you know, only Sunday day.
So there's a difference between a DJ that plays music on Sunday or a DJ that puts on a show?
There's no DJ that plays on a show.
And the weddings, the DJs at weddings, like, have shows and all that other stuff?
We don't, we don't, like I said, I, you know, I'm an honor. It's really, given my own personal preference. I have a problem with things being too loud. I don't, I think it kind of, it just takes away. If you can't converse with who you're with, to me, it's the few differences.
So with that said, there would be no time to be music without food and a kitchen being offered? Any other questions from the board this time?
No, this time.
What you can see, I can open it up. So, is there anyone here in Village Hall that wants to comment on this? Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment on this? All right. If, if there are any questions, Mr. Rico. I would ask a motion to close the hearing and reserve decision.
Some vote.
Say. This will be called one.
Trustee Pambana? Aye. Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart? Aye. Trustee Wongkwan?
Aye.
And Mayor Sherrill?
Aye. We'll be back. Thank you for the. Now we'll move to our agenda. Is there anyone here that has a question or a comment specifically about the agenda? Okay, anyone else? I have a question. Who's the?
Thank you, Mr. Charles. I would ask the Board to approve the legal Board of Trustees minutes held on Tuesday, January 3, 2023.
Say. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Coast Guard.
I would ask the Board to approve the schedule of exams payable as follows. General fund, one million, five hundred ninety-five thousand, twenty-three dollars. Full fund, twenty dollars. Capital fund, three hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and six cents for a grant total of one million, nine hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and six cents.
I'll offer a resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? This will be called one.
Trustee Pambana? Aye. Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
Trustee Wongkwan?
Aye.
And Mayor Sherrill?
Aye.
I would ask the Board to either approve or ratify the request to use public facilities subject to the secret certificate of insurance and CTC and common health guidelines as presented.
Hello, offering?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Coast Guard.
I would ask the Board to authorize a parking permit refund to Teresa Di Aluro issued on December 30, 2022 in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars since she was just notified by Flower View Management that a parking space on premises just became available.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pambana? Aye. Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
Trustee Wongkwan?
Aye.
And Mayor Sherrill?
Aye.
I would ask the Board to ratify the approval authorizing the village to enter into a contract with Road Work Ahead Inc. to remove and replace concrete sidewalk, anti-tex, ramp, and curb and asphalt repair in front of and of one side of the recreation center on Stewart Street and on Pool and Garage Road, which contract is feedbacked for the Village of Farmingdale contract in amounts of fifty-five thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars and authorize the mayor or village administrator to sign said contract.
I'll offer that resolution.
One second. Any discussion? This will be called one.
Trustee Pambana? Aye. Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
Trustee Wongkwan?
Aye.
And Mayor Sherrill?
Aye.
I would ask the Board to authorize the presented personnel to carry over 2022 vacation days due to unforeseen circumstances.
I'll offer a resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? This will be called one.
Trustee Pambana? Trustee Pambana?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
Trustee Wonga?
Aye.
And Mayden Sherrill?
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the payment of the unused earned accruals to retire employee Michael Lowey effective January sixth, twenty twenty-three in accordance with the CSE collective bargaining agreement as presented.
Hold for that.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pambana?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
Trustee Wonga?
Aye.
And Mayden Sherrill?
Aye.
I would ask the board to accept the letter of retirement from Department of Public Works employee Gregory Ensign to recite after twenty-four and a half years of service with the village effective January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Hold for that resolution.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pambana?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
Trustee Wonga?
Aye.
And Mayden Sherrill?
Aye.
I would ask the board to promote working doling from the position of clerk laborer to the position of account clerk in the accounting department at a contractual award of forty-five thousand, eight hundred eight dollars effective immediately in accordance with Civil Service Commission's guidelines.
I'm happy with that resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Pambana?
Aye.
Trustee Chair?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Aye.
Trustee Wonga?
Aye.
And Mayden Sherrill?
Aye.
That would be my.
Thank you very much. Um, now we turn to the board reports. We'll start with Attorney Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Just before our meeting tonight, I was proud to attend the swearing ceremony on Long Island for our new Congressman from the fourth congressional district, Anthony Despacito. Um, the happy news that he brought that he has also been appointed to the House of Representatives Homeland Security Committee. As many of you may know, Congressman Despacito um has been his experience first responder um working with both the New York City Police Department and the Island Park Fire Department, um all the way up to Chico Back Department. Um, there was a rouse around and applause when he announced, he announced his appointment to Homeland Security. Um, and he did indicate that he realizes the risks in the New York City metropolitan area on Long Island and will be working closely with our um police and our other offices of the Homeland Security um to protect all of us. Um, he ended uh with a statement, "Let's do right for America," and pledged to um work with all members of Congress, um which also received a great um deal of applause for his son to be there in that special occasion for him and for our congressional district. For our fire department, I'd like to welcome our chief who are here tonight, as well as our rescue company members who are here tonight. As always, I'd want to begin by thanking all in our four park fire department for their selfless, never-ending services to all of us in times of increasing challenges, complexity and demand. Now, as we work to meet the challenges, the understanding cooperation contributions of all are highly important and necessary. For nineteen years, many in our fire department community have lovingly participated in or supported a monumental program for the Essot County Firefighters Operation Union Warrior. Eight of our four park firefighting and firefighters, rescue company members, and former citizens traveled to Fort Bragg and Cantley in North Carolina to bring value, personal and family items that have done so much for our military members and base hospitals. Those generous volunteers who made the trip included members of the Hoover family, including ex-captain Patricia Chutefield, Father Bryant and Sister Aurora, former chief of Kent Fairland, rescue company Lieutenant Julia Toy, and Wardley Willie, and Randolph Holmes. NCFA OWW president and former chief, George Ford Brady, accompanied by Lindbergh, they call on our, on, on, on motor warfare trips to Walter Reed National Military Medical, Military Medical Center in Maryland and Fort Elkhaw in Virginia. Thanks to all, well, generous and give of your time and efforts to serve our military and their greatest time of the holidays, a nineteen-year commitment and a most meaningful achievement. For the chambers of Congress and our businesses, our chambers of Congress are both having membership guides right now. All of our four park businesses are encouraged to join our two chambers and take part in their formal meetings and activities such as the street fairs, tree lights, and others. Check the website, that, fourparkchamber.org, and cobraevangelychamber.org for the membership and best details. And speaking of events, Cobra Evangelion Chamber will be meeting this coming Tuesday, January twenty-fourth at seventeen in the Trinity. Lieutenant William Darby of the Four Oak Park Police Department will be speaking about business and cyber secure, cyber safety. We'd also like to thank the Cobra Chamber who made a generous donation to our Lady of Victory Outreach Rescue Program, coordinated by Outreach Director Maureen Russell. This wonderful community program for special needs students pairs them with student volunteer peers and adults who are meeting in recreation, basketball games, arts, crafts, and pizza in our Lady Victory Gym Cafeteria. Last Friday's program was filled with friendship, care, warmth, and fun shared by very large groups of students who worked together and made it a special night for everyone there. This program takes place throughout the year, and thanks to organizations like the Cobra Chamber, Cobra Evangelion, and Congress for support. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Trustee Chair?
Okay, everybody. From our building's pocket, the work associated with the Village-wide Energy Performance Project is progressing nicely with the upgrade of all building lights to LED that you can see here now a quarter of a time. The sports field lighting will be upgraded within the next month or so, getting ready for our active sports season. There are two major projects. The Cobra Evangelion project drawings have been submitted to the county for approval and to the building department for building code review. Construction is expected to start in the spring. For Centennial Hall, developers are working on progressing the engineered drawings to be submitted to the county, and the changes as requested by the village ARB point. From our police department, the police department would like to remind all our residents that the village, the village's overnight parking regulations mandate no parking on village streets from three a.m. to five a.m. It should be noted that as of January first, the fine for this violation, for violating this parking regulation, has been increased to one hundred dollars per ticket. This increase, ordered on by the board last year, was necessary due to a significant increase of residents violating the parking regulation, and also that the fines have not been increased for many, many years. Residents can request an exemption for overnight parking by the Domingue Village website at fourparkvillage.org underneath Quickly section titled three a.m. to five a.m. parking and vacation watch. Request for this exemption is limited to twenty-four events. Any, any questions regarding overnight parking should be directed to our police department at five one six, three two six, six four hundred, nine hundred and seventy.
Thank you, Trustee Chair and Trustee Stewart.
Hi, good evening. For the Recreation Center, for the pool, pool room in San Diego Drive, uh we are beginning to take summer applications um for summer employment. If you know or the candidate of sixteen years of age or older who's looking to do some maintenance, or um perhaps work at the pool and the grand center over the summer, those applications can be found on the village website. The um reconstruction project that we approved earlier is for the sidewalk, um an upgrade of the sidewalk from the, my sentence direction is so bad, all the way around the Recreation Center, um on Cool Garage Road to widen that sidewalk to make it safer for residents to get to um the multi-purpose ring and the baseball fields as well as the pool in the summer. Um, thanks to our Recreation Superintendent, Ray Crawford, um and our Building Superintendent, Rene Marcus, for their work in, in getting that project squared up. I think it would be a nice uh upgrade for our residents, uh once it's completed in the early spring. Uh, for the MTA, I'm the three T C, uh myself and uh Mayor Fitzgerald and Village Minister Jerry, Jerry Bamberg, and a member of our audience, I'm with the MTA three T C, uh was it this week? No, it was last, it was last week, sorry. Uh, we were looking to clear, clear up what we believe to be punch items and what the MTA believes to be punch items, and try to reach some resolution. We were able to force some things off the list, and we are still in negotiations about some of the events. Once again, if you have a problem with the MTA and the project, please go to their website at mta.org, and uh if you do reach out to the MTA, please let us know so we can add that to our records. Thank you.
And in addition, the new sidewalk was paid for by the MTA under the uh.
It was. You should give credit where credit is due. You're right.
Trustee Wonga?
Thank you, Mr. Man. Good evening, everybody. For the Four Oak Library, uh construction is ongoing, the ramp base is just about complete, uh and the roof is almost done, so we're making progress. Uh, more plans are in the works for the hundredth anniversary of the library, details will follow on that. Some upcoming events and classes, our game nights are grown on select Tuesdays in February, March. English language learning classes, Saturday, January twenty-first. The movie matinee Monday this month is January twenty-third, Miss Harris Goes to Paris, and children's painting and cooking classes. Sunday, January twenty-second is the Friends of the Library Bag Sale. Come by for Friends of the Library Bag with books for five or seven dollars and help support the library. Tuesday, January thirty-first, Certified Financial Planner Daniel Wasall will offer his assistance to plan retirement and understanding your social security benefits. As always, these and all activities are listed on the letter website, www.fourparklibrary.org. Four Oak Studios has student opportunities. They are currently recruiting four village area high school student volunteers, fifteen years of age or older, as well as college student volunteers who are interested in learning television production. For details of a scheduled informational meeting, call five one six, three two six, one one five zero, or email them at four me, uh it's four V S at four V S dot org. This week, January sixteenth to nineteenth, our award-winning shows will be, are being broadcast. Congratulations again to the West Houston Trio, the Four Oak Police Department Behind the Page, surviving an actor shooter, Four Oak Fire Department, Metal Alert, Emergency Medical Technology, and the Antique Road Test Brewster and Company. Each of these programs received awards at the Northeast Regional Awards recently. Regarding the hundred, uh the twentieth anniversary of the studio, all year long, there'll be flashback shows looking back on the first twenty-five years. Watch the schedule for those, and please visit www.fourvs.org or your local station for higher for the list of shows and the plan of all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wonga. With regards to the uh presentation we had here last uh two weeks ago with NYU and the proposal to uh have NYU be first do, the board is still studying the issue. Um, but with that said, the next board meeting is three weeks from today, and we may have um a special meeting on the topic prior to the next board meeting. We will certainly get that information out to everyone uh in due time, and we're also working on FAQs, frequently asked questions, that we are almost done with, and we'll call those those on Friday. Um, those will be in the Friday email that we've been sending out post every board meeting uh the last six to eight months. Um, with regards to Bama, uh yesterday, Nira started building the four-foot berm from uh Mayfair all the way to the triangle. Uh, I saw some pictures, pictures a little hard to tell to death, um but it is moving along, and they hope to have the fence on top of the berm by the end of this week. Um, I'd like to thank uh Glenn Posack and Nira for their efforts in getting this done. Uh, hopefully, once the fence is up and moved, it'll be along, it will be along the uh curve line, probably meaning another twenty to thirty feet to certain extent, especially along Hazel. Um, the fence along with F Y D that would be planted on the inside of the fence uh should help lessen the noise that is coming out of Alcoa, especially home, camp, and events. Like, like Felix from Wisconsin Media, Godless, Tom Talbot, and Brad Duffy from White State Media, who we are covering, uh, all of them. But that, like, those, those, ask for those, those, those.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Against? Coast of Carrot. Uh, I've opened up for questions, comments, concerns, of anyone that's in here. Are you?
Please, please, sir. The deputy mayor said about the movie tour in Friday, I was about to, I don't know to, I presume, and prepare for the in-house, and the first in-house, the city of the boys. Uh, because I'm a movie boy myself, and I'm, I'm a city, it's a little crazy, but like, I just gave all those people through, through, by, through the Purple Heart Association, I like, you know, the many, they would have made this, those a couple of our town.
So myself and Ms. Wolf, especially Ms. Wolf, are doing research on this, and you contacted, to give him, go to a complete contact that I have.
I, yeah, I connected the main branch, we got a name from the Purple Heart Association.
Yes.
And uh they got that to me, and they made one of the suggested guidelines, second suggested recommendations, and guidelines on how we can designate the judge as a purple heart community.
Okay.
And we have purple heart, hold up, okay, so we would.
Yes, well, we have a lot of information that we need to search.
You have to get a whole, you know, the regions up?
I just speak to the.
And they want to get the boy scouts involved in that, whatever, they want to do that. But I'm gonna thank you for what you said about the, the first, and you know, the quality, the fire department is very good at that, we got it a lot of times, especially a lot of them, they, they had a lot of pictures in the, of the, of the, so, I mean, you have a problem, uh, a, 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 town, 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 always a day, city of one cold, city of, city of a moment, you know?
Yeah, we got a lot of information on the, the research, so I think, uh, you know, then the.
Some, some.
Absolutely progress, yeah, significant progress.
All right, thank you, Tom, I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your service, and thank you for the trips that you've made to the military base.
And I'll see you, please. Trustee Chair?
Hold on.
Oh, my trusty chair is far.
Mayor, you just mentioned that there might be a special meeting, board meeting, in the emergency room, this morning. Is that a board meeting, or are we planning to invite the public?
We'll invite the public for sure.
Yes, that's right.
There is possibly a meeting, although that might be.
Uh, special.
Absolutely.
All right, so I'm just gonna follow up on some of the questions I asked last meeting. As the village received statistics, the fire department said they would provide to you whatever last year.
Yes.
What period of time do those stats come?
At least three years, and in some, in some instances, I think eight years.
Go back to two thousand.
Two thousand.
Four years.
Four years, yes.
It's amazing, yours increments.
Not every statistic goes back to that long, the certain statistics do.
Um, have they been in your department?
Yes, everyone has.
And have you noticed a significant decline in residents' response? You want me to define something?
Sure.
Something that's out of the way.
There's been a decline.
One minute, response time, two minutes, ten minutes?
No, but there's been a significant increase in the number of calls that I would say uh have a response time of more than fifteen minutes.
That is certain period of time?
During the day.
In a year, year.
No, I, I don't have that information, I just have the response time, I don't have.
Well, that's very good also, I'm just curious.
It's a good one.
I mean, I, I know from history that from Thanksgiving or the beginning of, through the beginning of January, you had significant back-to-back calls because of visitors coming in from out of state, visit their families, a lot of elderly people, a lot of elderly people traveling to see their children, so I, I think that we should possibly look at that, because I know, I experienced that a lot of times. Once you consider those statistics, are you going to publish those statistics?
Mr. Ryan?
I think they can be made available, but I don't think we can publishing the actual documents that were generated. I have a problem with this.
What kind of problems?
Potential litigation.
In what? Somebody suing the village or the fire department?
Among others. How do you do that?
That's, that's, that's great, you can leave like that, how does, how do we, how do we, when we make the discussion, the back to the board, and you want to go back to statistics? We don't have.
I think it can be shared away and all with the board and just what you, and we can talk here about that.
It's not just me, John.
Oh, yeah.
You're saying we can talk about that?
I'm trying to do my job too, okay?
No, I'm, I'm not doing a job, I'm speaking as a whole.
I'm trying to do my job as an attorney. I'm trying to do my job as the attorney.
Okay, I understand, this is not, this is not arguing with you, I'm saying, what, what could be actionable in an increase in response time?
I really don't want to get into that, just completely not talking about that, I mean.
We were going to do that two weeks ago.
I know, and I talked about that too.
Okay.
And I'm still a bit, I'm talking about it.
Has the village received the scheduled fees from NYU and/or a range of fees?
We have the range of fees for the uninsured, correct?
Yes, and the fees, I have a book between the village and NYU as well, I've had that for, for our.
No, last week I asked, is there a range of fees or scheduled fees provided, and I was told no.
For the uninsured, yes, yes, we have that.
Anybody?
The basis, yes, the fees between the village and NYU would be zero, so that fee we have.
Not the village, the resident.
The uninsured residents, we have, and we have part of FAQ, we detail, explanation as to how fees are determined, but that again is based on everybody's individual insurance. We do have what uninsured will be charged under.
Is it broken down from non-transport and/or transport?
They're all broken down as well.
It's broken down?
Broken down. I don't remember if it was non-transport, but transport was definitely, you know, if a mother's a service.
Yes, for present time, we know that at the county transports, there is no fee, I'm sorry, if the county responds and does not transport, there is not a fee to the resident on a county response. It's only a big transport, and that's why I raised the question whether that. Did they give any answers as to questions I asked about Medicare, considering deductibles and complaints?
That information is provided in the two twenty questions, I mean.
Is that the document that has not been prepared and sent out yet?
It's a, it's a draft form, it doesn't have written on its title.
Okay, I, that's why I'm asking, is it?
It takes a lot, a lot of work with it, so.
Mayor, I'm not.
You gotta give us some talking.
It's been, it's been two weeks, that's why I'm asking, have they provided any information? I need to hear from the board. I asked, did NYU provide information to you regarding billing for copays and, and boy couples?
No, the copays depend on your insurance.
And if you don't have it, then that's insured.
We have, we have this, yes.
Mr. Ryan, do you intend, I'm going to ask this pointedly, do you believe that the answers you have in reference to the billing would be made part of a schedule to the contract that might be signed by the, by the village?
It'll be scheduled, yes.
And will they be publicized?
Yes.
I do find interesting that, you know, if I called for assistance first, that I'm going to get a bill, and Susan calls for a bill, a call two minutes later, she's not going to get a bill, the resident. I think that's correct.
Or must the county?
Must the county.
Oh, rescue is indeed, okay, look at that.
I mean, that was the Northwell office, right?
I got a couple of questions about it, too. Any answer from Northwell in reference to if Medicare determines that a different means of transportation could have been done without serious risk to the health, to health? I'm sorry, am I doing that wrong?
I lost the question.
Okay, I got it, I'm sorry. Any answer from NYU about transport costs, if Medicare deems that another mode of transportation could have been done without serious risk to health? The example that I gave from the Medicare booklet?
That I don't have that.
Medicare, I'm sorry, NYU gave or they assigned, our billing department knows how to work around it.
The answer question, we don't have an answer to that.
Do you intend to find that? Is that kind of important? My next question is going to be about the frequently asked questions, which you're waiting to see that document, the next step, I appreciate it. It's my understanding right now, maybe I'm wrong, maybe you're going to be correcting, that the county is dispatched simultaneously with, simultaneously before by rescue of certain types of calls. Is that correct?
Chief?
Yes, that is correct.
And what kind of calls are those?
Cardiac, seizure, stroke, difficulty breathing.
ODs.
I believe OD and possibly an injury.
Diabetic?
Diabetic as well.
And I also understand that NYU was not interested in that sort of arrangement, and demanded you primary and all rescue calls in four parts. Is that correct?
And not demanded you primary and all rescue?
Right now, the county is dispatched simultaneously on certain calls, like the ones you just announced. That NYU was not interested in that kind of plan.
No, they'll be first.
The last thing I understand that Northwell was asked if they would have a 24, Northwell, no, I'm saying Northwell, was asked if they would have a 24, 24/7 presence in the village and at eight o'clock. Is that correct?
That's correct. You know.
No, they had a 24/7 presence, but it was not dedicated to Four Park, and it was contingent on a rotating model of backup.
So I understand that they would not have a 24/7 presence in the village, they wouldn't have ambulance stationed in there.
They would have, what they had said was they would have one stationed outside the 711 possibly, but if it got called to another location, it could lead and we could not have an ambulance during that lapse.
Outside of the village.
Outside.
So it would not be exclusive.
Is that, I'm going to say that. Was there a discussion with, with Northwell to have the same type of arrangement, arrangement that Four Park County has with the county, where they perform the same way, and rescue and Northwell would be in that?
So, just an A L S, what do you say?
All calls?
County does all of them.
Okay, so would Northwell only respond on, on those kind of calls, that the counties responded?
I don't believe that, that was something that we asked.
That's why it's, it's discussed. Because the counties worked for a period of time, maybe not perfectly, and that's why I was going to ask on the stats, was the fire department provided the statistics when the county responded?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, I would say, okay, so, we did accept that for a long period of time, as Northwell would be contacted to do the same kind of information with the Four Park, where they would respond to the other counties. No, maybe, maybe could be discussed. Do you have any public?
Yeah, it's just, for me, from what I've heard, and I listened at every meeting with the chief director, Northwell would not stay here. They might be near here, but they would be staying in a certain area, so whatever the call was, got the sense that you couldn't necessarily count on a nearby ambulance to respond. They always were able to.
Couldn't count on a response in a specific period of time, or period, but they, we don't believe they would respond.
Oh, no, I'm sure ambulances could respond, but the question is how far could they be and how busy could they be? As I said, that's from, meaning I had that, but the chief's or other.
I don't think, I'm saying, at the board, wasn't really different. I guess, I have one more question, and then I'm going to ask a real question. Do you guys know paramedics and NYU are unionized?
I do not know the answer to that.
We just saw what happened in New York City, there was a nurse strike, I don't know if they are unionized or not. I know the county, paramedics, they could be subject to, to be told, you can't go on shock, because they're counting points.
I don't know the answer to that, I don't, I do not know the answer, I don't want to.
No, they're, they're not.
Yeah, I should get that.
Secondly, I'm going to ask, maybe not the board this, here I am thinking about the changes that we're going, that you guys are going to contemplate. I don't know where the rescue actually stands, I don't know where the rescue company actually stands, I don't know if they've taken a vote. I've had to sit down, someone told me, rescue company voted in the majority of the meetings. I don't know if they've voted. Do, do we know that?
What I can't say is, Dr. Martin and myself, that the company, and we got a feeling as to what it was, it was, it was definitely split.
It's split, it's given to the company, so. Just do that. I don't know if I mentioned this at the last meeting, have you all considered or even inquired with the rescue members, how many do you think are going to recertify their EMP status? If they're dispatched so infrequently, and also, how do you think their skills are going, you believe their skills will deteriorate on a few months of calls if they do respond to them? I know a lot of them.
I don't know the answer, I did not press inquire as to who would or would not recertify.
I'm not saying they aren't assigned a contract, but it'd be nice to know, because it's either the rescue company or the, there's going to be a rescue company that probably goes back to the initial charter, which said the rescue company was formed just to provide aid to firefighters after a fire. That's, that's what we're going to go after, but I don't think that's what the village has come to expect from our rescue company.
The village would be the rescuers.
I don't mean.
Yeah, 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 I agree with you, I'm sorry.
I, I just don't, I don't see them coming back to recertify, is there any, Mike, do you know any? I'm sorry, trustee chair on the floor?
The, the, for the cores, 24 hours right now, they got about 40 hours of non-core, plus what you aren't going, maybe from your.
To recertify?
Recertify, that's the basic.
60 plus, right?
Yes.
Finally, I just don't know how, and I don't know how the village really does plan to communicate this, this whole change if we do adopt it with the residents. I know we have, I think we've told me 4,000 email addresses, we have the website, and we receive almost the website and our emails to bring out people to our meetings. How do you publicize this and not cause a shock, once they do, if they do, except that when they start getting bills? Yet, the public needs to find this out, and how do they, a special meeting is not going to do there, we both know that.
The best, Facebook, we have a Facebook page, we have the email blast, it's the best we can do, I can reach 16,000 people on every account. And also, what, I agree, one, we can, you know, mention many times civic associations and other organizations and events we attend.
It's interesting, the civic, civic Southside, I went over there to Zoom now, and now I headed back to impulse, that's a good thing to happen. You ever hear that, people talking about the Southside? I didn't, I didn't know the Southside, I don't have, no idea how that happened. Well, I look forward to seeing the frequently asked questions, we're going to push it out on Friday, every month, or special meeting, I think, and I don't know why, the exit circumstances it is not to be done in such a manner that we can't get the word out to the public, that we can't, I know you want to schedule a special meeting prior to three weeks of meeting, that's the board's decision, obviously, but I don't understand the exit circumstances at this moment to, to rush to make a decision without having a chance to publicize and then educate the public, and that's what we need upon the ground.
We can't educate the public until we actually get action, right? That's one of the.
No, you can, you can educate the public prior to, if you've got a special meeting to explain, this is going to be a scheduled piece, do not call because I fixed my ankle, or I hurt my, my nose.
I told people.
Oh, they do it now, I mean, I don't think it's not, because they don't expect a bill. They have a fire, the fire department's not sending a bill, the village is not sending a bill to the residents for a fire. They don't, they don't send a bill when a police officer responds to a break in an house. This is a, this is a service not provided by the village, provided by the fire department in their volunteer status to the residents of this town, I'm going to, how many years now? I forget, when it was formed, well, we've had the ambulance since 1980, people never received a bill.
Understood.
I understand, you understand, but I think the education part, and giving time for people like that to digest the questions, there may be more questions after the, this piece of paper comes out, or the document comes out. And to rush, I don't understand the emergency need at the moment to give out a document on Friday, and say you have a scheduled, a special meeting within 17 days of the next quarter. Friday, the state, the state, the 16,000 people.
I mean, we've been discussing this for about three months, and it's been mentioned at at least the last four board meetings.
Yes, you have, but the public doesn't know that. I know, you have to get the word out, you just, you have to put out the frequently, the frequently asked question, and the answer. And you say, you've been talking about it three months, the public needs, has a right to know what these questions and answers are, they may not be inclusive of all questions. Sorry, not president on arguments.
Thank you.
By the way, a good way to go back is, you need to score five, so the rest, you need to score five, to be free to think about this one thing, or think the deadline next. No, they, they, it's four, four.
No, it's January, it wasn't really tough.
What do you think?
I just want to feedback on one point that Shannon said. I contemplate the issue about notifications to the public, and really, it's something that sticks in back of my mind. The village paid the effort to mail out a rescue schedule changing the pickup hours in plastics, and then on Wednesday, we do a call on Thursday. I think the obligation is certainly to send every resident, every building actress in this village, a hard copy of these proposals. And we can't depend upon electronic media, because there's a certain proportion of the public that doesn't use, and I'll raise my hand, in a certain generation, that it's not the way they go, when we talk about losing a day, we have a form of communication to pay. Honestly, it's not a burden budget-wise to do that, I'm just, just.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else support? Anyone on Zoom? Just want to say, chief, that's, and then you can, what you want to comment on, and the, the.
Well, I think the earth is, again, you know, this is not about receiving a bill, this is about response time, and I'm sure that everybody that calls the ambulance has an expectation that they're going to have an ambulance at their house for two and five to be able to respond to their emergency. And we cannot assure that right now.
Thank you. See you in three weeks.
I have a couple of questions for a moment, I'm sorry. I understand it's the, that it's emergency, because you can't wait, take five minutes, whatever it was, to do this. Where is this company, where is, NYU calling this station, that it's such an emergency?
We have two potential places to work.
And will that be ready by, for two weeks?
Yeah, they could, they'll be, yeah, yeah.
Time doesn't matter, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, but it's, 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 yeah.
If you have questions.
Yeah, we have two potential response times.
Excellent.
Five days, it sounds a little grand yesterday, because FDNY is over nine minutes, in the biggest, greatest city in this country. I think, expectation of five days is a little unreasonable. Also, we have a police department who gets training to be able to stabilize an incident until we can get there. So we depend upon them, they have oxygen, they have training, they come out of the academies as first responders, they're able to do that, so it's just stabilization. Not going to A L S call.
Excuse me, sir?
Not going to A L S call. Five days, it's on an A L S call. We can't even guarantee right now that we're going to have an ambulance there within 10 minutes. I gave you two examples the other day. We have three or four chiefs at the scene with two police cars. I'm providing A L S. No, but you'll put an SPO2 device on somebody, and, and, you know, what is that? What's that supposed to be? We're practicing, we don't even have credentials.
Doctor. Excuse me, do you have any comments about response times?
Response times?
Uh, I'll defer to Lieutenant Darty, we just have, oh, can you bear a second?
Specifically what they are, or?
No, in your, in your opinion, the response times of emergency situations and the ambulance getting to the scene?
Of our response, or are you firing?
Fire, not in this.
I'm here because I'm concerned about the situation, I'll leave that. That's an anecdotal answer, I don't have a fear of others, but.
That's an anecdotal answer, I don't have the fear of others, but I'm sure we can just double up, but I'm here because I'm concerned and interested in the problem.
Thank you. Very welcome.
So, I think Chief Dotson, I make every call, almost every call every day, correct? You see my mug, almost all the time, yes?
You don't make every call every day.
No. You know, see, Crystal and I, almost every day, on a everyday course?
Last Saturday, A M, our ambulance did not get out, last Friday afternoon at four thirty, one of our members, I think a family member, that needed an ambulance, our ambulance did not get out.
In the last couple of days, there had, there was, what, six calls in one day, is that correct?
I don't have that information on you.
I can assure you, today, you know, Chief Dotson is complaining about the amount of time that it takes us to get to the scene, my office is on Babinia, I walk from Babinia to the firehouse, and then I wait for Crystal Pepe, who lives north of Jericho, to drive her car to the firehouse, you know what, she doesn't have good boarding to go through lights, so she has to stop at lights, the fact of the matter is, we get to the calls, I'm sorry if, if we're three minutes late, but to get to the calls, I find it disrespectful, what's going on, you know, I'm a member of this company for thirty-eight years, and I'm taking it seriously, I love it, but how we're being treated right now, is uncool for me.
Anyone else? I'd thank you, and see you in three weeks.